School Board for Tuesday, May 16th, 2023. On behalf of the members of the school board and Dr. Mitchell, I welcome each of you present this evening and those who are watching on TV and online. A quorum is present to transact the business of the school division. We will begin tonight's meeting with the invocation and pledge to the flag. Here to do the honors are two students from Newsome Park Elementary, Aubrey McKinnon and Terrell Johnson. You can please come up to the podium. Well, Terrell, come forward and please deliver our invocation.
Hi. Hello, my name is Terrell Johnson and I am a fifth grader at Newsome Park Elementary School. And today I will be reading a poem titled "Your Best." "If you always try your best, then you'll never have the wonder about what you could have done if you submitted or you had done it. And if your best was not as good as you hoped it would be, you still could say, 'I gave today all that I had to be.'"
Good job. Aubrey, would you please come forward and tell us a little bit about yourself? And then lead us through the pledge.
Hello, my name is Aubrey. I'm 11 years old and I run track. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Thank you both for participating in tonight's meeting. And yes. And did you bring family members or friends with you this evening? Okay, please stand so we can tell you all thank you as well. Thank you so much. The next item on tonight's agenda are school board recognitions. So Dr. Mitchell is going to join me at the podium. But before I do so, I think we have a councilman in our midst. John Ely, are you here with us this evening? I think you were... There he is. Thanks for joining us, John. We appreciate that. Okay, Dr. Mitchell.
Good evening.
Good evening.
It's a pleasure to share our honorees this evening. We have quite a few, so that's a good thing. So we're excited about that. Our first honorees this evening earned regional and national honors. The Triple Helix Robotics Team, based at Menchville High School, successfully defended their title as champions of the first robotics Chesapeake District Competition and advanced to compete at the International Championship in Houston, Texas. This evening, we are honored to recognize this championship team comprised of high school students in Newport News, York County, and Pacosa School Division and our homeschool programs. Please join us in congratulating Justin Babalino from York High School, Justin Bizard from Warwick High School, Gabriel Cubus from Menchville High School, Isabel Drier from Menchville High School, who couldn't be here this evening, Matthew DeJarden, homeschool, Henry Kester, homeschool, Caleb Lighten, homeschool, Aiden Menji from Pacosa High School, Josh Nunkunj from TAB High School, Joshua Nichols, homeschool, Lucas Powell Whittle from Menchville High School, Michael Price from Demby High School, Daniel Sosa, homeschool, and Dylan Taylor from Pacosa High School. We also want to recognize and congratulate their volunteer mentors. Mr. Bill Breton, will you please come forward? If you're present. Don Brunt. What about Cameron Caldwell? Todd Ferranti? Okay. Chris Garrity? Okay, we've got him in there. Nate Lovett. And also Chris Morris, Amy Nichols, Mike Schumay, and also Tyler Van Ness. Now, Triple Helix won the three-day district competition championship featuring the top 60 teams from Virginia, Maryland, and Washington DC. So in addition to capturing the championship and earning a bid to advance to the International First Championship, the judging panel also awarded Triple Helix the Innovation in Control Award, which celebrates innovative control techniques to achieve gameplay functions. Now during the International Championship, Team Triple Helix met over 600 other high school teams from all over the world. The team continued to demonstrate high-powered robotic performance up on the charged-up playing field and easily secured a spot as one of the top scorers on the daily field. The international competition or championship capped off a season that saw Triple Helix ranked among the top 100% of teams worldwide. That's quite an accomplishment. So we'd like to congratulate the team and take the opportunity to recognize their family members and school staff who may be present this evening. So if you would stand, please, so that we could recognize you as well. Thank you. Great, thank you. Our next honorees are gifted musicians. They are among the best high school vocalists and instrumentalists in the state and have earned the All-Virginia Distinction. To reach this accomplishment, high school students must audition and earn a top chair or place in the district event, which makes them eligible to audition for an All-Virginia Ensemble. Newport News is proud to recognize six students tonight who have earned this honor. As I call your name, would you please come forward to receive your recognition and remain until all of the honorees have been announced. From Heritage High School, under the leadership of Coral Director Arcilia Simmons, is Savion Frazier and Celeste Kelly. From Warwick High School, under the guidance of Coral Director Limbalu, is Casey York. Our honorees from Woodside High School, under the leadership of Coral Director Emilio Posante, are unable to join us this evening due to a prior commitment, but we want to acknowledge Daria Garnett and Emma Thomas. And we would also like to acknowledge, named to the All-Virginia Symphonic Band from Woodside High School, is Liam Barnstead, who was also not able to attend this evening. Now, selection to an All-Virginia Ensemble represents the highest honor that the Virginia Music Educators Association can bestow upon a student musician. It is a testament to the hard work and discipline of our students, the dedication of our music educators, and the constant support of their families. These All-Virginia honorees participated in a two-day series of rehearsals featuring a guest conductor and participated in a full-group performance. So congratulations on being named to an All-Virginia Ensemble. And we would ask that the family members and school family would please stand who have supported these outstanding students, if you are present, so we may acknowledge you as well. We thank you for your support. This year, one of our high school bands earned top honors by the Virginia Band and Orchestra Directors Association. The Virginia Honor Band designation was created 44 years ago to recognize high school bands with a comprehensive program. We are proud to congratulate the Menchville High School Band, which earned this distinction as an honor band. So joining us this evening to accept this recognition on behalf of the Menchville Band is its director, Ms. Deborah Sarvey. Ms. Sarvey, would you please come forward? Bands achieving superior ratings at the State Marching Band Festival and at a district concert festival are recognized as an honor band, the highest award that can be bestowed upon bands by the Virginia Band and Orchestra Directors Association. The Menchville High School Band has a proud history. It is a nine-time honor band honoree. So Ms. Sarvey, we ask that you please pass along our congratulations to your band members and boosters. Thank you so much. The Virginia Interscholastic Athletic Administrators Association promotes the progression and growth of athletic administrators and supports their involvement in the planning and implementation of all phases of the Virginia High School League's athletic program. Each year, the association names an Athletic Administrator of the Year for each of its classes. This year, one of our own is named the 2023 Class V and VI Athletic Administrator of the Year. Please join me in congratulating Lee Martin, our Director of Athletics. Mr. Martin, would you please come forward? Mr. Martin was formally recognized during the VIAAA State Conference held in Richmond in April. Now, Mr. Martin joined Newport News Public Schools last year and has worked to advance our athletic program. As a seasoned high school athletic director, he brings a wealth of knowledge to the school division and is working to enhance our athletic program. He is coordinating the installation of new scoreboards and lighting at our middle and high school athletic fields. Mr. Martin is also leading the expansion of our middle school athletics program. The development of practice and game fields is underway, and uniforms and equipment have been purchased, all to support the launch and expansion of seven middle school sports. So congratulations on being named Athletic Administrator of the Year. So joining him this evening are members of his family and the NMPS School Leadership Team. So would you please stand to be recognized as well? Our next honoree was recently recognized for his work in promoting school athletics. Ray Price, telecommunications supervisor, was inducted into the 2023 High School Hall of Fame by the Virginia High School League. Mr. Price, would you please come forward? Mr. Price was inducted into the High School Hall of Fame during the 34th Annual Induction Ceremony held last month in Charlottesville. Mr. Price is recognized for his unyielding commitment to the promotion, broadcast, and streaming of high school athletics in Newport News Public Schools. During the induction ceremony, he was noted for setting the standard for high school sports broadcasting throughout the Commonwealth. During his 30-year tenure in the school division, with the support of his student videographers, Mr. Price has coordinated, produced, and directed over 150 live high school football games featuring thousands of student athletes and competition. In recent years, Mr. Price has expanded sports coverage to feature basketball, wrestling, volleyball, and middle school sports. So congratulations, Mr. Price. Now, joining him this evening is his production team working at our television station to produce this live broadcast and his family. So would his family please stand? And we're rounding out the evening with Athletics Continues. Newport News Public Schools hosted its 41st Track Hall of Fame Induction Ceremony in March. The event, held in conjunction with the CONMAD relays at Todd Stadium, celebrated the accomplishments of two individual athletes, a Sonya Anderson Jefferson from Heritage High School and Darius Banks of Demby High School, and a track and field team. Now, due to a scheduling challenge, one group of honorees was not present during the induction ceremony. So this evening, they were invited to the school board meeting so that the school division could formally recognize their accomplishment and induction into the Track and Field Hall of Fame. Please join us in congratulating track stars Marilyn Watkins. Ms. Watkins, would you please come forward? And Ms. Arlene Gwen Broward. Would you please come forward? Now, Michelle Stokes Johnson and Lynda Walker Gray are the other two members of this winning team and weren't unable to join us this evening. Let me tell you a little about these ladies. In 1974... I'll keep going. In 1974, this powerful Ferguson High School track team captured the girls' 4x100-meter relay state championship with a finishing time of 50.6 seconds. Now, after graduation, Ms. Watkins earned a degree in Health and PE from Norfolk State University and returned to the school division where she taught and coached at Ferguson and Warwick High Schools. In 1997, she became the first female full-time athletic director in NMPS history. She retired a few years ago and continues to assist with athletic events. Now, after graduating from Ferguson High School, Ms. Gwen Broward earned a physical education degree from Virginia State University. She then entered the Newport News Police Academy and joined the force. Ms. Gwen Broward is currently an athletic success academic coach at Christopher Newport University. So congratulations on being named to the Newport News Track and Field Hall of Fame. Now, joining these athletes this evening are members of their families, and we ask that you please stand to be recognized. And Mr. Lee Martin. So we'd like to thank you for joining us to celebrate this honor. So congratulations again to all of tonight's honorees. We will take a... We will take a short break. During this time, our viewing audience will be able to enjoy this month's school board spotlight. So the school board meeting will stand in recess for about eight minutes. So thank you very much for coming this evening.
Some very special readers. Visited students at Demby Early Childhood Center and Catherine Johnson Elementary to celebrate the month of the military child. Bilingual Air Force personnel from Joint Base Langley-Eustis visited students enrolled in the Dual Language Immersion Program at both schools. Dual Language Immersion is a unique learning experience at five Newport News schools that allows enrolled students to learn content in both English and Spanish throughout the school day. Demby Early Childhood Center and Johnson Elementary started hosting dual-language classes this school year. The students at Johnson welcomed their guests by reciting the Pledge of Allegiance in both English and Spanish, while the preschoolers at Demby ECC presented their school motto in both languages. Bilingual military service members were invited to read "Good Night Captain Mama", Buenas Noches Capitán Mama, a book written in both English and Spanish by a Latina officer and aviator who served in the US Air Force. The military guests took turns reading both languages, creating a fun and interesting reading experience, perfectly suited to the students learning to speak fluently in both languages. This was also a practical example to the young students of professionals who use their bilingual talents to serve others. Afterwards, students colored a picture representing all military branches while spending time getting to know their new military friends. Every student was gifted a copy of the book to add to their home library, giving them a chance to sharpen their fluency in both languages by reading to their families. The gifted magnet students at Woodside High School have a new stage for displaying their incredible talents: the school library. As the Arts and Communications Magnet Program, Woodside High School encourages their art students to apply what they learn through performances. To support and promote these magnet students, a library team met with magnet educators to schedule mini-performances during select Wolverine Wednesdays. This school year, student audiences have enjoyed performances by guitar ensembles, orchestra and piano musicians, and creative writing students. To enjoy these live performances, Woodside students sign up online to reserve their seats, with more and more students showing interest after each Wolverine showcase. For those lucky enough to snag a limited seat, it's a wonderful opportunity to support their friends and see the range of talents in Woodside's magnet programs. For the performers themselves, it's another chance to practice in front of a live audience as they sharpen their artistic talents. Every month, students at Heritage High School are given the opportunity to spend their lunchtime developing important life skills. Lunch and Learn, organized by professional school counselor Terry Jones, was started last school year to offer students a safe space to learn soft skills and discuss topics not usually covered in the classroom. Lifehouse Church Newport News has been a wonderful community partner, kindly providing box lunches for each monthly session. All students at Heritage are invited to take part while learning about a variety of topics, including healthy relationships, time management, being responsible on social media, and mental health strategies. Through engaging activities and thought-provoking discussions, students gain valuable insights and experiences as they grow into contributing citizens. Special guests visited Discovery STEM Academy to make Earth Day a community event. High STEM Resource Teacher Michelle Braxton collaborated with each grade level to create fun and engaging learning experiences for all students. Guest readers, including elected school board members, interim superintendent Michelle Mitchell, and various school readers, read some of their favorite nature and earth-themed books to different grades. Volunteers with Newport News Master Gardeners gladly shared their knowledge and resources as they taught students the importance of earthworms to an ecosystem and helped young gardeners plant butterfly... gardeners plant butterfly-friendly plants to attract the fluttering pollinators. Meanwhile, each grade hosted their own classroom activities, giving students a chance to grow their own plants from seeds or take part in recycling efforts. And resource teachers offered students specialized Earth Day activities: sorting recycling during a fast-paced Earth Day relay in the gym, coloring their Earth Day pledge during art, and exploring the power of nature through STEM. For students at Discovery STEM Academy, Earth Day was an opportunity to let their knowledge shine and creativity flourish. The Sanford Elementary family brought a garden to life, and the timing couldn't be more perfect. To celebrate Earth Day, students, PTA, and community partners worked together to establish a brand-new garden called Sanford Seedlings. Sanford's PTA organized everyone's efforts, with mulch and soil kindly provided by the NMPS Plant Services Department. Throughout the day, students from various classrooms helped transport mulch and soil into the custom-built raised garden beds. PTA members, families, volunteers with Virginia Master Naturals, and environmental ambassadors from Canon all devoted time and hard work to preparing the garden area and growing beds. Canon employees were enthusiastic to assist a local school on Earth Day, with Sanford providing the perfect opportunity for community engagement. Anderson's Garden Center graciously donated a range of vegetable plants, which students and volunteers happily planted. Sanford Seedlings features six raised beds, so each grade has their own crop of vegetables to water, maintain, and eventually harvest. This gives all students at Sanford the educational opportunity to see firsthand where fresh, healthy produce comes from and play an important role in growing delicious vegetables from Students and staff at Denby High School decided to serve their community during Earth Day. Denby hosted their first annual community cleanup with the hopes of expanding this service in the coming years. Organized by Principal Michelle Huffstettler and School Resource Officer Erin Watkins, students gathered on a Saturday morning to spread out and clean up Denby neighborhoods. Tennis players helped clean and beautify the area around the tennis courts and athletic fields. Meanwhile, students and staff worked together to clean up the sidewalks along Denby Boulevard and beyond. The students enjoyed working together to make a positive impact on their community, working hard to fill 15 giant bags full of litter and debris. And their efforts didn't go unnoticed, with folks stopping to thank them for their generous act of kindness. By taking action and serving others, Denby's students and staff created a memorable Earth
I hope you enjoyed this month's school board spotlight. During our regular meetings, we provide time for the public to address the school board. These opportunities are scheduled in the early part of our agenda and also towards the end of the meeting. As advertised, citizens may submit comments via email up until 30 minutes prior to our meeting time to be included in the official meeting record. For those of you joining us in person, the school board considers this an opportunity to listen to your comments. Please understand that we will consider your concerns. We ask that you comply with our three-minute time limit. As you begin your comments, a green light will come on, a yellow light signals you have 30 seconds remaining, and a red light and beep indicates that your time is up. As your name is called, please come forward.
Do you want us to turn it back around?
You can.
Okay.
You can do it. That's right, you're doing presentations tonight. We're excited.
Good evening, everyone, board members, and Dr. Mitchell. My name is Michelle Nordine, and I am the Newport News Council of PTA's president. This is Shannon Richardson, my council treasurer, and Charlotte Clark, my council secretary. I would like to thank the school board for this opportunity to share our year-end awards with everyone tonight. Each year, Newport News Council PTA awards college scholarships to graduating high school seniors. Scholarships are awarded based on a demonstrated commitment to and engagement in volunteerism and community service. Students also must be a member of a PTA or PTSA in good standing. Could Jalen Smith please come up? This year, I am pleased to announce that Jalen Smith has won a scholarship from Newport News Council PTA. Ms. Smith attends Menchfield High School and is a member of Gildersleeve Middle School PTSA. Ms. Smith showed initiative in finding a PTSA to join when she realized that Menchfield did not have a PTSA this year. Ms. Smith will be attending University of Maryland Eastern Shore in the fall with a major in biology. She wrote a lovely essay, but I'll just share the highlights. She has an interest in pediatric anesthesiologist or pediatric cardiologist, but after a family emergency, she learned more about the heart, and she would like to become a pediatric cardiologist. So I would like to congratulate her on her scholarship. Congratulations. Thanks. Yep? Can you take a picture? Get back here. Okay. I'm good. Okay. Annually, Virgi... Is that your phone? Turn it off. All right. Annually, Virginia PTA recognizes an outstanding elementary school and secondary school volunteer who has made a positive impact on their school and its students. This special volunteer does not need to be the person who logs the most volunteer hours or serves as an officer or committee chair, but rather someone who has worked to build a strong school community. This year, Newport News PTAs had two applicants for the Volunteer of the Year award. We would like to recognize and honor these two outstanding volunteers who have given selflessly to make their community a better place for students and staff to achieve their goals. Could Chief Petty Officer James Westbrook please come up? We would like to honor Chief Petty Officer James Westbrook from Booker T. Middle School. Chief Petty Officer Westbrook is the father of an eighth-grade student at Booker T. Washington Middle School. Chief Petty Officer Westbrook approached the PTA at back-to-school night, introduced himself, and expressed his desire to help the school. He provided sailors from his command as volunteers, and his team has assisted at every opportunity. He and his sailors show up when requested to do any job asked and do it with a smile. They have volunteered at concession stands during vallaw season, as well as participated in events sponsored by our family engagement specialist. They also helped during Custodial Appreciation Week by helping with lunch cleanup while our custodial staff enjoyed lunch provided by the PTA. Of all the jobs they have performed, the most impactful one is the one-on-one time spent with the children. You can see the connections forming and the positive role models these sailors are on our children. Currently, Chief Petty Officer Westbrook is assisting with coaching our girls' basketball team. We are grateful for his willingness to assist and his ability to engage and involve others in the lives of the children. Chief Petty Officer James Westbrook. Did you... Okay. Did you want to do this one? Okay. Could Melissa Patterson please come up?
We would like to honor Melissa Patterson from Dutro Elementary School. Ms. Patterson has been a vital part of Dutro's PTA for the last 15 years. She has been a member, a teacher representative, and a secretary, just to do the least of those tasks that she has. She encourages all families of her students to join the PTA and get involved. Ms. Patterson strives to make things better and is always at all the events that are held by the PTA. She is not afraid of stepping up and helping. The countless hours that she has volunteered is one that a person cannot record, as she always has looked out for everyone, not just herself. She empowers the voice of the PTA by involving all the staff and the parents to get involved with the PTA, is one that can make a difference in everyone's life. She believes strongly in the PTA and the mission of empowering everyone by bringing the issues forward that benefit everyone at all times. Ms. Patterson is a very strong, outgoing person and truly cares about everyone that she comes in contact with.
These are our two Volunteers of the Year, and Charlotte Clark is the Dutro PTA president, and she nominated Ms. Patterson. These are our Volunteers of the Year, so thank you. Give them another round of applause. Although we could only submit one Volunteer of the Year in each division to Virginia PTA, we would like to take this opportunity to recognize and honor some of our other volunteers. Volunteers are the backbone of PTA. Without volunteers, our PTAs could not accomplish everything that they set out to achieve. We would like to honor Joy Johnson from Dutro Elementary. Ms. Johnson goes above and beyond for Dutro Elementary with the creativity of flyers and communication to all families. She is always cheerful and is always looking out for the best interest of all the families and staff. Ms. Johnson explains the mission of the PTA and is a wonderful asset to us. She goes all-in with the events and is a wonderful person to be around. We would like to honor Teresa Felton from Richneck Elementary. Ms. Felton has been indispensable this year as we restarted the PTA at Richneck Elementary. I was the temporary PTA president, and as I was swamped with council PTA dues, Ms. Felton took the idea of hosting a fall carnival at Richneck and ran with it. Ms. Felton took the... She put on one of the finest fall carnivals that I have had the pleasure of attending. She organized and set up 21 different activities for our Richneck families to participate in. In December, she was my sounding board when I asked if we should sell candy grams to our students. Fast forward to March, when I returned to Richneck to try and get the families involved in PTA once again. Ms. Felton has become my point of contact for the school and families. Ms. Felton sends emails, organized a poll to schedule PTA meetings, and has helped persuade parents to become board members for next year. Without Ms. Felton's help, I would have been unable to get the Richneck PTA up and running this year. Thank you, Teresa. I'm a nervous speaker, and my nose runs when I get a nervous speaker, but you all know that. Thank you once again for letting me share our awards and honorees with you. I look forward to working with you all next year. I have another year on my terms, so I look forward to working with you all.
We look forward to it as well.
Thank you.
Good evening. I am Pam Hall of the Southeast Community. Democracy is rule of the people, for the people, and by the people. It is unacceptable that after more than five years, the fate of Huntington Middle School and its students are still in question. It is like the movie Groundhog Day, where the weatherman becomes trapped in a time loop, forcing him to relive the same day over and over. We, the people of the Southeast Community, feel that the corner of 28th and Orchid is a less safe location than 3401 Orchid Avenue due to the traffic, which will only increase once 30th Street is closed, to join the city's two blocks with the school board's five blocks to form the Southeast Community Resource Area. The building and maintenance of schools should be handled by the school board with funding from the city. If the city had provided the funding requested by the school board over five years ago, Huntington would have reopened in September of 2022. We need to stand firm and insist that the city fulfill their financial obligation to our children by providing for a new middle school at 3401 Orchid Avenue.
Members of the school board, Dr. Mitchell, good evening. The Newport News School Board is tasked with the responsibility to lead the Newport News Public Schools. As such, the school board represents all associated with public schools: administration, teachers, students, guidance staff, and all others who work for the schools. It is incumbent upon the school board to represent all of these groups as fairly and strongly as possible. The school board provides guidance to these groups in a single voice, but sometimes, as it happens, others speak for the school board. Lawyers representing this board recently filed a motion in a particular lawsuit against this board. Speaking for their client, the aforementioned school board, lawyers stated firearms, including handguns, are not permitted in Virginia schools by anyone other than law enforcement, and six-year-olds such as John Doe are not permitted to possess firearms anywhere. Big surprise. The lawyers for the school board go on to state that the teacher was injured while in the course of her core employment, and that, given the current state of education in the city and the country, it is a reasonable expectation that the teacher could be shot. Therefore, lawyers representing this school board have said that it is a reality that students pose a threat to teachers. Not one of you on this board has spoken out against this statement, thereby providing tacit agreement. As a result of these statements, which represent this ward, it has now become apparent that this school board considers teachers getting shot while teaching as just another hazard of the job. Not one of you has gone to the media to deny this. Cowards! You have abandoned your teachers, administrators, and other employees. You have abandoned students by expecting them to attack or injure school employees because the teacher or the employee should have expected it. Expect the student to attack an employee. College, career, and citizen-ready, have there ever been emptier words? I ask two things of this board tonight. First, on all employment opportunities with Newport News Public Schools, the following should be added. In full disclosure, successful applicants should expect to be assaulted, beaten, and/or shot while on the job. Please note that the Newport News School Board will not support you if you are injured by assault, beating, or being shot while in the employment of Newport News Public Schools, as this is an expected part of your employment. This will at least provide applicants fair warning for any positions they apply for. The second thing I ask of this board tonight is much easier: resign, each and every one of you, immediately. You have lost the faith of the teachers, administrators, and other employees of this school system. You have announced that you have given up on students by demonizing them as a danger to school employees, and you have lost the faith of this community. Several of you were recently elected or re-elected to this board. If we only knew them what we knew now. It is said that character is shown by how one reacts and deals with hard times. Well, the hard times are here, and your character is in tatters.
Good evening, Newport News Public School Board members and the general public. Thank you for providing this forum. I am Wendy Stuck, proud high school Spanish teacher and a former Teacher of the Year for my school. Praise point one: While no one ever says they are excited about SOLs, I must compliment the school system for our new high school testing schedule. Four dedicated days are much healthier for our students than three to four weeks of testing. Thank you for trying this. Praise point number two: Newport News did an excellent job providing stakeholders, families, students, employees, and the public with opportunities to express what they seek in a new superintendent. Our school system provided multiple dates, times, and places in addition to... Our school system provided multiple dates, times, and places in addition to online methods. I am disappointed that more people did not come and participate in what you offered. That was their chance to share their voice and opinion. My concern. My concern is with our school system's lawyer's choice of words. I understand it is a lawyer's job to do what they feel necessary to win their case. I refuse to expect violence. The moment that that becomes a part of policy, it becomes a mindset. This could set a national precedent. I refuse to expect my colleagues, custodians, secretaries, administrators, aides, security people assistants, clinic people, cafe, or teachers to be violent. I refuse to expect our building guests, our parents, our guardians, our volunteers, our delivery people to be violent. I refuse to expect my students to be violent. A man I admire told students daily, "I expect nothing less than your very best in everything you do." To expect violence is to say we gave up on our students. Students, I will not give up on you. No one should expect violence in schools, not employees, not guests, not students, not you. Students, I love you. Make good choices. Come back to us next class. I have high expectations. I believe in you. I expect good.
Dr. James Graves.
Good evening.
Good evening.
And thank you to Board Chair Ms. Laws, Dr. Bass, and members of the Newport News School Board. I'm an educator and also the Newport News Education Association President. And we're affiliated with Virginia Education Association. It's the labor union for the public educators and school workers in Newport News. The NNEA is one of the fastest-growing VEA locals in the state, and we are pursuing collective bargaining. We ask that you, uh, assist us in collective bargaining process, and that we will hope that you will make a public announcement about being with us about collective bargaining. At least do that. I suppose I say a lot of stuff, information up here, but I have been told that I have to be careful what I say, and but I've I want to say this. Newport News Education Association has a great relationship with the school board and administration. You have my statement. It was pretty rough, but you have it. And I want to let you know that we are with you. All the union members are with you. We want to make sure that you understand that. That when any news people say stuff out the way, it is not coming from Newport News Education Association. It's coming from somewhere else, and it's not me speaking for these members. I thank you for this time, and I appreciate your assistance with collective bargaining. Thank you.
Thank you. Jenny Basemore.
Good evening.
Good evening.
My name is Jenny Basemore. And, um, I was advised of a meeting, I think that is supposed to come up on Thursday, concerning the rezoning of our sixth graders at Huntington Middle School. And while it may be, uh, true that our sixth graders at Huntington Middle School are not in a good place at Heritage, we only ask that Huntington Middle School not be a school only on paper or that it close permanently. We want what is best for our students. Our major concern is that the original vision of this Southeast project and of those who will remain nameless does not come true. That is, that there be no Huntington Middle School for our students in the Southeast Community. I want to remind you too that buses can go in both directions. Therefore, we continue to ask that Huntington Middle School continue, excuse me, continue its magnet program, and that it continues as well that we give steam to Huntington and make it the best school that it could be in this city. Huntington Middle School shall rise again, and we hope, at thirty-four oh one Orchid Avenue. I thank you for your time.
Christina Beckett.
Good evening.
Good evening.
My name is Christina Beckett. I am a product of Newport News Public Schools, and my son is also attending Newport News Public Schools. I would love to thank everyone for the hard work and dedication you put into all of the interventions regarding safety for our students and staff here. It does not go unnoticed. But I also speak to you not only as a parent, but as a child who was involved in a school shooting here in Newport News in nineteen ninety-three. When I was in middle school, my teacher was killed at our school within moments of my bus arriving to school. I did witness her there, and I, uh, was relieved to see officers arrive at our school that day, um, as the perpetrator was hiding behind our school for hours. So, I thank all those officers for coming out and and helping, uh, that day. And I would like every possible intervention implemented in order to prevent this from ever happening again. Um, the events in January triggered some serious emotions in me, um, that I've had to deal with as a mom with my child going to school every day and remembering back to when I was in middle school. So, um, I was here in February when we went over the safety plan, and I believe one of the interventions was to have Newport News police officers or sheriff deputies present during high-traffic times, such as when students are arriving and departing school. Um, I do participate in, um, child drop-off and pickup, um, getting my son to school, and I did see that taking place for the first few weeks of implementation. However, I have not seen, uh, the police presence at the school during these times in the last couple of months. I would say I saw it for the first couple of weeks of February, maybe into, uh, March, and that was the last I saw that. Um, when I addressed this with the school staff, I was informed by school staff that if officers are receiving other calls in the community, they must respond to those calls. Therefore, they have not been available to be on school school campus at that time. So this is of concern as it is deviating from the safety plan discussed in February and decreasing the level of safety. Unfortunately, due to the population size of Newport News, more than likely, officers will be and are being called to other situations. I do understand that. I'm a crisis worker in the community, a mental health provider. Uh, but unfortunately, this is resulting in officers not being present on school campuses. Authorities investigated a recent school shooting and learned the shooter had initially selected another location, but then changed their mind and selected the school instead because it had less security. Six people, including children, lost their lives that day. Private schools in Newport News have partnered with the Newport News Police Department in order to have an officer present during all hours classes are taking place. And I am proposing Newport News Public Schools do the same in order to have a police officer present at all school at all schools while classes are in session, not just middle and high school. I do understand officers are not able to be in two places at once, and officers will and the officers will be and are being called to manage situations out in the community. Therefore, having an assigned Newport News police officer placed at each school permanently would solve this concern, and officers would not be pulled in multiple directions, and school staff and students would have increased protection.
Thank you.
Thank you for your time.
Valerie Fashion.
Good afternoon, uh, Dr. Mitchell, the school board members, and the viewing audience. My name is Valerie Fashion. I'd like to discuss the assistance for students' educational progress. In order to address the impact of COVID-nineteen pandemic on students' educational progress and well-being, our governor, uh, Glenn Youngkin, announced in March of twenty-twenty-three the availability of thirty million dollars in K through twelve learning acceleration grants to be used for qualifying education services. The Virginia Department of Education is currently accepting applications from the parents, Virginia parents of school-aged children, and tutors and providers. The parents and tutors, the parents and the tutors are now available to access the portal, which is, um, D O E dot Virginia dot gov. The two available grant applications are for fifteen hundred dollars, that's the standard application, and the thirty-five hundred dollars, which is the income qualified application. Parents need to make sure that their children continue learning throughout the summer. I would like to encourage all Newport News parents, guardians, grandparents, et cetera, to use our public libraries and sign your child or your children up for the twenty-twenty-three Summer Reading Program. Everyone should sign up for the free library card at your nearest library branch. Our libraries offer the following amenities: copy scan and fax station, public computers with printing, free Wi-Fi, PS4 console for teens, mobile device charging station, free notary service, local history and geology, free Wi-Fi high spots, hotspots, technology classes and workshops, passport services, books, movies, audiobooks for checkout, and much more. I would also like the board this year to consider setting a new trend by encouraging all twelfth graders to register to vote, provide by providing an opportunity in their civics class, uh, their history classroom, at lunchtime, at graduation practice, uh, uh, at a special event before graduation. At graduation, students can be recognized by Dr. Mitchell, the interim superintendent, for two special accomplishments: earning a high school diploma and becoming a registered voter. This could set precedence for decades to come. These two accomplishments will have a lasting lifetime impact in Newport News, the state of Virginia, and the United States of America. Thank you for your time, and thank you for all you do for our students.
Thank you. Appreciate everyone's comments and coming to share your thoughts with us this evening. We will now move on to section three, the consent agenda, which includes three-point-zero-one minutes from the work session on April eighteen, twenty-twenty-three, three-point-o-two minutes from the closed session, April eighteen, twenty-twenty-three, three-point-o-three minutes from the regular meeting, April eighteen, twenty-twenty-three, and three-point-o-four minutes from the closed session, April twenty-fifth, twenty-twenty-three. Three-point-o-five, the financial reports, including the revenue report for April twenty-twenty-three, the expense report for April twenty-twenty-three, the child nutrition reports for April twenty-twenty-three. Three-point-o-six, the personnel report. Three-point-o-seven, V S B A nominating committee members-at-large nominee Douglas Brown. Three-point-zero-eight, budget transfer. And at this time, can we have a motion to approve the consent agenda?
Madam Chair, I move to approve the consent agenda as presented.
Do I have a second? Second. And any questions?
Madam Chair, because I'm, um, my nomination is to the V S B A board at large as part of the consent agenda, I'll abstain from the vote.
We wish you well, um, on your application, if it's approved. Please call the roll. Ayman. Four.
Yes.
Four.
Harris.
Four.
Hunter.
Four.
Alger.
Four.
Solskjaer.
Four. Motion carries. Six. Six, one.
One abstention.
One abstention.
So congratulations.
Thank you.
On your opportunity to apply. Okay, we will move on to section five, reports and information. Five-point-zero-one, the monthly school update. Dr. Mitchell.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Tonight, Megan Allman, Title-One Coordinator, will provide an update on our upcoming summer program that we affectionately call Spark. Uh, at the conclusion of her presentation, in the interest of time, I will go ahead and share with you that Mr. Lee Martin, Director of Athletics, will bring you an update on our new middle school sports program.
Good evening, Madam Chair, Searl's Law, Vice Chair Dr. Best, Dr. Mitchell, and members of the school board. My name is Megan Allman, and I'm here this evening representing the Spark Planning Committee. Tonight, I would like to provide you an update concerning Spark twenty-twenty-three. We started our Spark recruitment efforts in March as we solicited to our internal employees. As of today, we are excited to share that we have secured four-hundred-and-eighty Newport News employees to serve our students this summer across the city. Of the four-hundred-and-eighty employees hired, nineteen will serve in the capacity of administrators at our summer sites. Currently, we have hired three-hundred-and-nineteen teachers for our summer programs, and of the three-hundred-and-nineteen, we have one-hundred-and-sixty-one teachers across our six elementary sites, seventy teachers across our two middle school sites, and eighty-eight teachers at our one high school site. This summer, we have hired thirty-two special education teachers and seventeen English learner teachers. To support our instructional efforts this summer, fifty-two instructional assistants have been hired to work with our students across all campuses. New this year, we have added one professional school counselor to each school, and additional security officers have been added to our programs, with six assigned to our high school location, four assigned to both middle school locations, and three assigned to each of the six elementary locations. Each site will also have a secretary and nurse that will work for the duration of the program. This slide addresses the selection of students who will attend Spark. Students at the elementary and middle school level who require remediation in the areas of reading and math receive notification on the quarter-three report card that they had been selected for summer school. At the elementary level, three-thousand-six-hundred-forty-nine students were selected to participate, and at the middle school level, one-thousand-eight-hundred-forty-four students were selected. Families were then asked to complete a registration form that accompanied the report card that was sent home. This registration form is currently being used by our Transportation Department to determine site location and bus stop information. Transportation information will be made available in June on the web query for families as the start date for Spark nears. At this time, we are under open enrollment at the high school level. Registration for Session One closes on June twelfth. Any high school student who would benefit from credit recovery receives a registration form via mail from the professional school counselor. Families who are interested in credit advancement opportunities should work with their child's professional school counselor to receive approval and register for the correct course. Registration forms are available at each high school and can also be found on the Newport News website. This summer, our focus in elementary school will be English and math while providing enrichment experiences in the area of some of science. The focus in middle school will be English and math while providing enrichment experiences in the area of computer science. This five-week program will provide engaging learning experiences for students, and meals and transportation will be provided for all participants. In addition to credit recovery opportunities, current high school students in grades eight through twelve have the opportunity to take a new course for credit advancement during the summer Spark program. We are excited to offer two new options this summer through our very own Virtual Learning Academy. Students are able to register for trig with elementary functions, as well as Chemistry One for both asynchronous and synchronous instruction. With the exception of these two virtual options, all other summer courses courses will be taught in person at Woodside High School. In addition to our Spark program, STEM camps, and the Summer Institute for the Arts, our summer locations will also be sites for additional programs such as the Extended School Year, our program for educating exceptional preschoolers, and newcomers through our English as a second language department. At this time, I would be glad to answer any questions.
I have a question. You said you're accepting additional students at this time?
Yes, we're still registering, and we've got, um, schools reaching out to parents, especially the ones who have received the registration form, if we have not received that back. But high school registration goes through June twelfth for the first session.
And for elementary?
Yep. Still ongoing actively this week. We're constantly reaching out to schools and letting them know which registration forms we're still waiting to receive back.
Approximately, how many more would you like to see with your target?
We would like to see as many of the three-thousand-six-hundred at the elementary level and as much as the eighteen-hundred at the, um, middle school level, but right now, we're just really trying to get as many of those kids back. Um, I don't have the exact numbers in front of me, but I can get those to you.
I just have a quick question in case any anyone is wondering. I noticed the high school credit recovery, uh, is only second semester, so is the thought if someone struggled in first semester, they would be waiting until the next year to take that again?
So they're also going to get the forms. It's just as they start, yes. So they're also going to get the forms, it's just as they start, yes, that's a, that's sorry, I didn't clarify that. They've already received them for the first semester, they will be receiving them for the second semester. Yes, that is correct. Yep, you'll be able to get credit recovery for both semesters.
So, middle school students uh or or others who want to take an advanced course, um get a head start on high school, uh take, say, uh geometry or algebra, um what is their process for trying to get involved in a course?
So they also have um access to those credit advancement if they're rising ninth graders, um and we have given applications to the schools um so they can work with our professional school counselors to figure out which course would be appropriate for them.
Okay, I really like the addition of the counselors uh onsite this summer.
Yes, we're excited about that as well.
Great.
Wonderful.
Thanks for your presentation.
Thank you very much.
Good evening again.
Good evening again, and congratulations again.
Thank you for my recognition, I appreciate it. So, good evening, Madam Chair, Searl's Law, uh members of the school board, uh Dr. Mitchell, and other school board leaders. I am Lee Martin, the Director of Athletics for Newport News Public Schools, and I'm honored to give you an update on the status of our middle school sports for Newport News Public Schools. So we have planned and will be ready to offer seven sports for our middle school students for the next school year. We have purchased all the necessary equipment to begin competition for football, soccer, and wrestling, and we have alleviated storage concerns by purchasing a ten by fourteen-foot storage shed for all middle school campuses, one of which already sits on Heritage's campus for Huntington's use. The development of game and practice fields will begin this month. The major three game fields are on schedule to be available for action starting in September. We hope to have the practice fields, if they're not finished at the start of September, to be ready in the fall at some point, but the three game fields will be ready. Outdoor scoreboards have been designed and ordered for nine school locations, including Demby and Menchville, which will host middle school football games for Gilder, Sleeve, and Passage in the spring of twenty-four. All game-ready uniforms have been designed, ordered, and delivered to all eight middle schools for the three new sports plus sideline cheer. We have spent nearly one point three million for these five areas to be ready at the start of school year twenty-three, twenty-four. Uh we believe uh this is a much-needed investment in our city's youth. We believe organized sports teaches values, sportsmanship, and promotes fitness. We also know that being a member of a valued team teaches responsibility, teamwork, and improved self-esteem. I've spoken to many community members who are extremely excited about this and that we have taken the next step for our next generation of leaders. So I can answer any questions for you at this time.
I'm gonna go with Dr. Best first uh for questions.
Thank you for your report.
Yes, ma'am.
Um and this looks very good, I'm very excited about it, and I'm sure it's your students' community as well. My question is regarding, has there been any like coordination with the city? I know that we may have some recreational leagues that use fields and things like that, and like, what is the plan, or is there any feature collaborative type?
Definitely.
So.
We know there's a partnership with some of our community groups. We have a couple of strong rec youth programs, and I've been in contact and conversation with a couple of them.
Okay.
Uh it it will uh change some of what they do at this point, but I have some options that I'm gonna offer to them to help them out. We have space that we'll be able to help them with.
Okay, thank you, because the more, the better.
Yeah.
Yes.
Thank you.
Yeah, I don't want to take away from one to help the other, I think we can work together.
Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Brown?
Okay, so, of course, yes, extremely excited. Uh been waiting a long time for this, uh and and really excited about what's uh what's taking place and what we're gonna see next year. Question about the fields, um are these, uh so I know that uh for Todd Stadium, we of course did the um all-weather type surface, artificial turf surface. The fields themselves at the uh at the middle schools, are they gonna be the artificial turf surface, or is it natural grass? It'll be Bermuda sod. Uh we're going through some irrigation talks. I actually have a meeting Thursday to go to all the sites to look at irrigation. We have a, we have an estimate for for those fields to be done. Uh we may have to alter it or ask to alter it uh based on some irrigation needs, uh but the plan at this point is to roll Bermuda sod, which if we can irrigate and and let it take hold, uh it should be a great playing surface for our kids. And practice space um has hasn't, continues to be a challenge uh going forward, so it's particularly in the expansion of additional sports. Um is there any bit more analysis or discussion about acquiring additional practice space? Other than the the fields, I mean, other than the the land that's Right. under schools, I have not. I'm 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 making plans for what we have already in place. So we've got some practice plans uh for a couple of fields. Uh we have about three, we have three schools that don't have enough land to actually create a full uh field. Right. But we can create a smaller s- scale practice field, and they can use that for both soccer and football.
And Mr. Brown, I will just add that uh Mr. Fairheart, Mr. Wright, and I have been in conversations with some of the questions you've asked us, and we will do Mr.
Right, and
Okay.
I'll continue asking, you know that, right, thank you. Yes, sir.
Marvin, did you have a question?
Oh, okay. I just have a quick question, thank you for the update. Um you mentioned the fields at Gilder, Sleeve, and Passage may be a little bit into the fall that they're ready, the practice fields. So are those, will soccer, or is anything gonna be starting in the fall? What are we gonna be doing for practice if their fields aren't quite ready?
Gilder Sleeve has space to practice.
Okay.
Yeah, it it may not be in a a Bermuda sod, perfect field, but they have space in the back of their campus that they can use for soccer. We knew they wouldn't have enough room to have a soccer game field, so we have other plans for their games. Passage actually has a fenced-in soccer field that that Parks and Rec develops and takes care of. So we'll still partner with them, but the middle school at Passage will use that field for their soccer field. And if you're familiar with Passage, they have a large field over to the other side of campus. Yeah. That's where their practice field will be developed, which they'll be able to practice football. But we, that won't really be needed until the spring of twenty-four, so we have a little bit of time for that.
Okay, any other questions? Thank you, we're very excited.
We are too, thank you.
Thanks, Dr. Mitchell, for all of your leadership and helping us get it. Oh, who had another question?
No, it wasn't a question, it just was a statement.
Oh, yes.
You wanted to glance back this way, but you didn't, so.
Oh, I'm sorry, go ahead. What is?
No, I just want to uh, you know, congratulate the staff and administration, uh because this is one of these things sometimes a lot of people talk about, but, you know, these individuals actually went out and did it, okay? Uh it wasn't a lot of meetings, and it wasn't a lot of reporting back to the board. And, you know, that's the type of atmosphere we need. You get a mission, you go out, you execute, and it is what it is. Uh sports at the middle school level, and I'm sure everyone understands this, people may not really want to grasp it, is very influential, and it cuts down on a lot of, a lot of uh discipline issues.
Yes.
Okay, I mean, it it's been proven. So, uh this is gonna take time. Uh we're re- re-establishing a um a different mindset, uh not just in the school system, but also throughout the city. And uh so I just think it's a wonderful thing, I look forward to the success of it, thank you.
Okay, thank you. Okay, we'll move on to item five point oh two, the federal funding applications. Dr. Mitchell, I believe you have a presentation on that.
Yes, we do. At this time, Ms. Letha Brooks, Federal Programs Supervisor, will share the proposed uh spending plan for federal federal programs, in other words, the title programs. You are very used to having this presentation come before you every year. Um at the conclusion of her presentation, she will share with you that uh we will be asking you next month to approve the recommended funding plan.
Alright, good evening, Madam Chair, Madam Vice Chair, Court Members, and Dr. Mitchell. I'm Letha Brooks, the Supervisor of School Improvement in the Federal Programs Department, and I'm here this evening to provide update on the twenty-three, twenty-four annual federal funding plan. Verinda Robinson and Dr. Reggie Austin are also here to lend their support tonight. I will share information on the title grants that are monitored and supported by the Federal Programs Department, which include Title One, Parts A and D, and Titles Two, Three, and Four, Part A. This update will include the purpose of each grant, a breakdown of allocations, and some illustrations of grant fund usage. Each grant is written to embrace and support the strategic goals of Journey twenty twenty-five, support equitable opportunities for students, and complement the evidence and research-based programs and interventions used in the division. While all the strategic goals are supported through each grant, this table shows the delineation of which grants are most closely aligned. It is our goal that funds are used to engage, challenge, and develop student success, primarily seen in Titles One and Three, create environments for students and staff wellness, Title Four, cultivate employee expertise, Title Two, foster partnerships in and outside of Newport News, Titles One A, One D, and Four A, and finally, to manage the stewardship of resources, which is evidenced in all grants. The funding provided for twenty-three, twenty-four for Title One is approximately eleven point seven million, Title Two approximately one point three million, Title Three just over one hundred and eighty-seven thousand, and Title Four just over eight hundred and ninety thousand, for a total of approximately fourteen point one million. Additionally, all the grants, all of the grants we manage are formula grants, so they are non-competitive awards allocated according to our student population and/or other census criteria. Another goal of this presentation is to show the degree to which we support and respond to district needs as the federal program staff truly understands responsibility of managing and monitoring funds in this amount. The purpose of Title One, Part A, is to improve basic programs in public schools with high numbers or percentages of children from low-income families to help ensure that all children meet challenging state academic content and academic standards. Title One is our largest grant, serving over nine thousand five hundred students across nineteen Title One schools, which include three early childhood centers, fourteen elementary schools, and two secondary schools. This grant supports over thirty-six percent of all our students. Title One funds are primarily allocated to personnel costs, which allows the district to provide additional support to enhance the quality of instruction in our schools. This instructional support in part is accomplished through additional staff. This includes interventionists and reading specialists who support students in math and/or reading, instructional specialists who support teachers' instructional practices, and a family and community engagement specialist who plan and facilitate events throughout the year to connect, further connect our families with the school community. Title One also provides funding for other staff to include pre-K administrators, PALS assistants, paraprofessionals, technology support, and the federal program staff. Additionally, each grant has miscellaneous expenses such as mileage, contract services, printing costs, material supplies, and indirect costs. The next few slides illustrate our partnering with other Newport News public schools departments, V D O staff, stakeholders, and other school districts, private and public, to ensure we are constantly growing, learning, and sharing. Our team is committed to being continuous learners. Here are books we have read as a department, are currently reading, and have in queue. To promote consistent language and information around grant usage and guidelines, we created a federal programs handbook, which is available with many other resources on our district website. To ensure stakeholder engagement and input, we facilitated a Title One needs assessment to garner ideas on allocating funds. We also offer training and PD to ensure compliance and accuracy with grant funds. Note that the two in the center were not wearing their mask incorrectly, but were engaging in one of our activities. We also held a Title Two and Title Four needs assessment to further identify areas of opportunity and analyze their root cause factors. As a part of our Title One needs assessment, we sought input from a group of fifth graders from Title One schools. Here you see the top answers to our question of how they would use one thousand dollars in their school. Note that the school being more enjoyable and improving grades were very close while inviting their parents to school for activities came in third, but still very positive. Our takeaway is that our students value instructional time, want to have fun while learning, and want a bit of autonomy while doing so. This is an example of using our student voices. The purpose of Title Two Part A funding is to improve the quality of leadership and teaching through recruitment and professional development. This grant provides supplemental funding to support effective instruction, to improve teacher quality, and increase the number of properly licensed and endorsed teachers in our classrooms. Title Two funds are utilized to support staff and students in grades K through twelve and are allocated to personnel, miscellaneous costs, and private school set-aside. Funding supports professional development to improve teacher and principal quality as well as division-level instructional coaches and specialists who assist teachers of all content, core content, in using best practices. As required by ESA regulations, a portion of our funding is provided to eligible private schools to support their academic programs and ensure equitable services. The Title Three Part A grant supports language instruction as well as enhance opportunities for English learners and immigrant youth. Funding is used to address English language proficiency and the academic achievement of English learners. Grant funds are allocated to professional development, personnel, and miscellaneous costs, which includes private school set-aside. Title Three funding supports family and community engagement specialists who focus specifically on the E L population, ongoing professional development through two split teacher coaching positions, as well as a professional development for teachers and administrators. Title Four Part A provides funding for K through twelve student support and is intended to improve students' academic achievement by providing all students with a well-rounded education, improving school conditions for learning, and improving the use of technology to enhance digital literacy for all students. For Title Four, the funding is broken down into the three categories. Like Title Two and Three, the Title Four grant has a portion of funding provided to private schools to support their academic areas in these areas as well. In the well-rounded area, funds are allocated for instructional coaches in secondary schools to support A P and I V training, and to support evidence-based instructional practices. For improving school conditions, funds support leadership and youth development training, and in the use of technology, funds support staff professional development. Title One Part D is a sub-grant of the Title One Part A grant and supports the Newport News Behavioral Health Center, a residential treatment center for youth ages eleven through eighteen. The purpose of this grant is to provide prevention and intervention programs. The Federal Programs Department is responsible for managing this grant of just over seventy-one thousand, which is allocated for personnel costs, contract service, and miscellaneous costs at the center. The next few slides further illustrate how grant funds are utilized. Funds are allocated to promote STEM and other events to ensure our students have an opportunity to engage in and apply the concepts they are learning in their classes. Student activities occur either during the day, after school, during the summer, and/or on Saturdays. And we certainly appreciate, as we know our families do, when our district leaders and board members are able to visit and support our events. Of course, we will end with the reason we are here, our students, the ones who should benefit the most from our federal funding. Here you see the book vending machines, which have been a huge motivator of independent reading, promoting literacy, and growing home libraries. So our next step is to seek board approval by June twentieth, after which we will submit our applications to the Virginia Department of Education by July first. Thank you so much for this opportunity to share on behalf of federal programs, and if there are any questions at this time, I'll be happy to address them.
Retsa?
Yes, um in terms of uh the schools that receive Title One, I noticed there are fourteen out of twenty-four, am I correct, elementary schools? And then two out of seven. So how is that decided? Like, uh because every school has students that Right. Right, have Title
So it is the majority of, we have um, we use a formula, and so the schools that have the majority of families in poverty are, it's actually on a scale, some are very close, and, but we serve the ones that are seventy percent and higher.
It's seventy percent? Okay. Okay. So has there been any thoughts about changing that? So has there been any thoughts about changing that criteria? Has that been discussed at any...
Actually, that is designated, right, that's designated through VDOE.
Okay.
And there are schools, when schools are close, we do, we are able to allocate additional funding, but we have to work that through the operating budget so that they are getting funds that are more than schools with less low-income families. So we try to make it equitable, but for the formula to receive the actual Title I grant, they have to fall in a certain criteria.
As far as the schools?
Right, as a whole. And we do the entire school, we don't just serve the Title I students in each school. It's a school-wide system.
Other questions?
Thank you.
We have item five point zero three, new and revised policies. Dr. Mitchell, I think we have a presentation.
We do, Ms. Tracy Brooks.
Good evening again, Madam Chairman, Madam Vice Chairman, Members of the Board, and Dr. Mitchell. It's a pleasure to share highlights from several new and revised policies and procedures with you this evening, as we continue this year's policy chapter review process. Now, the policies and their procedures were reviewed and revised by the Policy Committee, which includes board members, principals, teachers, administrators, and our school board and school division attorneys. I will begin this evening by highlighting one revised policy that supports best practices in the school division, and then we will continue our review of the Human Resources Policy Chapter. To help facilitate the policy review process, in this first policy, we are proposing revisions that will allow the superintendent to make administrative changes to existing school board adopted policies. Now, the current policy allows the superintendent to make updates to Code of Virginia citations, and we are recommending that the superintendent be allowed to make updates to Virginia Administrative Code citations as well. And like most organizations, we change the names of departments and positions to reflect school division functions, so we are also recommending that the superintendent be allowed to update the names of specific departments, offices, and staff position titles in policies as the need arises. In every case, the superintendent will notify the school board prior to making any such changes. And next, we are excited to continue the review of the Fifth Policy Chapter in our timeline, which is on human resources. Now, earlier this year, we presented policies related to employee benefits, so this evening we will present the next group of policies, which will address employment services. I'd like to thank our Director of Human Resources, Mrs. Nina Farish, and her team for sharing their expertise and allowing us to complete and to continue this important work.
Spanish?
Thank you, Tracy. Good evening, Madam Chair Searls Law, Vice Chair Dr. Beth, Members of the Board, and Dr. Mitchell. I am presenting human resource policies that have incurred significant changes. First, we have a drug-free workplace program for all employees that follow federal requirements. We have added language from the Department of Transportation Code. That provides guidance for staff in safety-sensitive positions. Guidance includes new testing requirements for Schedule I drugs, including marijuana. We are recommending updating the language for the human resources goals to align with Newport News Public Schools' strategic goal. Additionally, we are recommending that the definitions of employee groups are updated to align with the Code of Virginia definitions. We also recommend updating the employee group title Educational Support Staff to Support Staff. We recommend this change based on feedback that many staff think educational support staff only represent licensed staff. We are recommending, are requesting removal of the local licensure policy. The Virginia Department of Education no longer honors this type of license. It was less than a provisional and non-transferable. It was only good for use at the district level. They have not used this policy in some years. We recommend combining the Support Staff Letters of Appointment and the Support Staff Probationary Employment Policies. The language in both policies pertain to the same group of staff and reference the same topics related to employment. The policies address salary notifications and probationary employment. The Staff Conflict of Interest Policy addresses prohibited conduct by school division officers and employees in performance of their official duties. We are recommending an update of this policy to include the language from the Virginia Public Procurement Act and the State and Local Conflicts of Interest Act. We recommend changing the title of this policy from Staff Input and Planning of School Division Operations to Staff Involvement in Decision-Making and Planning of School Division Operations. This more aligns with actual practice and allows more staff the ability to be involved. The current policy on nepotism establishes in order that there is no conflict of interest in supervision and evaluation of employees. At no time may any staff member be directly responsible for the supervision and/or evaluation of any employee who is a relative. We are recommending to add the language that indirect responsibility for supervision of an employee be reviewed on a case-by-case basis. The case review will consider direct evaluation of the involved staff. Any employee in an indirect line of leadership must not have any disciplinary input or involvement with the relative. That concludes the recommended human resource policy changes. In terms of our next steps, the revised and reviewed policies will come before the school board for action at your June twentieth meeting. And once approved, the reviewed and revised policies, procedures, and exhibits will be posted on our school division websites and disseminated to schools and public libraries. This concludes our report this evening. We are happy to answer any questions.
I do have a question, and I just, it was so, our meeting was so busy with so many policies, but I'm noticing in the lactation support changes, we're pulling out the space for a student that might be a nursing mother to have an opportunity to pump, and I didn't know what the reason for that was, if that was going in somewhere else, because we're changing mother to employee, but then it also enrolled as a student in the division. And I know it's rare, but I don't know what provision we might offer for students in that situation.
And we can revisit that, but if I remember correctly, I thought that there was something on the student's side available for students?
Yeah, if someone could just pull that for me between now and June.
That was initially coded for both students and employees, and we decided to make them suffer policies.
Okay.
So we will definitely, under the law, provide that space as needed.
Other questions? Thank you so much for the work you've done on these policies and the ones that are coming up. Okay, we have five point oh four, the attendance report, five point oh five, membership report, five point oh six, the construction report. Board members, you've received copies of these reports. Are there any questions at this time? Hearing none, we'll move on to item five point oh seven, comments by the interim superintendent, Dr. Mitchell.
Thank you, Ms. Searls Law. Last week, we were fortunate to share the evening with forty-two talented and dedicated educators who represented their school as Teacher of the Year. During the banquet, we had the opportunity to recognize each of them for their service and commitment to our students, and it really was a very enjoyable evening. So I want to congratulate all of our Teachers of the Year, and certainly a special shout-out goes to our top Teachers of the Year, who were announced at the end of the evening, and you can see them on the screen. Congratulations to Shonda Woods. She was selected as our Division-Wide Teacher of the Year, as well as the Middle School Teacher of the Year. She currently is an integrated language arts teacher at Cretton Middle School.
Yeah, she's...
Is she here?
Yes, she is.
Would you please stand? Where are you?
She's in the back room. There she is.
Yay! Congratulations are also in order for Shandra Borns, a preschool teacher at General Stanford, who is named the Elementary Teacher of the Year, and I don't want to miss her if she's here. And Michael Sage, a history teacher at Demby High School, who is named the High School Teacher of the Year. And Dr. Blow, hold on to your hat. I know Dr. Blow worked with him. So congratulations to our Teachers of the Year, to all of our Teachers of the Year, and then again to our Teachers of the Year by level and also for the Division. And I have convinced Ms. Woods that we are going to go for the Teacher of the Year for the state of Virginia. So we're going to completely advocate. Additionally, a few weeks ago, we did have our Youth Development Department that hosted the Secondary Star Awards, which celebrated our student leadership and volunteerism. The awards program did recognize a hundred and eighteen middle and high school students. They represented forty clubs and organizations that really are making a positive impact in our schools and our community. And remember, this is something students are doing on their own. Obviously, they're not being paid for it, they're not getting grades for it, they are putting a lot of effort and time into these organizations, so we want to congratulate our honorees. May is National Mental Health Month, and I do want to acknowledge and thank our national award-winning social-emotional support team that consists of our student support specialists, our mental health therapists, our school psychologists, and our school social workers. They are a part of our crisis team. We want to thank them for what they do. Additionally, May is also Better Hearing and Speech Month, so we want to acknowledge our speech-language pathologists, as well as the teachers who support our students, who work with our students, our teachers who support our students, who work with, they work with our students who are deaf and hard of hearing, so we acknowledge them for Better Hearing and Speech Month. We, of course, have a wide range of resources that support our students. This is also National Education Bosses Week, so for all the bosses in all the schools and all the sites, transportation, plant services, all of our sites, we do salute and dedicate the work of our leadership teams that are across the Division. We want to thank you for your commitment and your servant leadership. What you do every day does make a difference in our school communities. We want to invite everyone to join our STEM Community Day, presented by Newport News Public Schools and Christopher Newport. It is this coming Saturday, May the twentieth, from ten a.m. to two p.m. at Freeman Center on the campus of CNU, and you do know traditionally, we have lots of families that come out, so families, we encourage you to keep that trend going and come out to Christopher Newport. The event is free. There will be interactive exhibits for all ages, displays of, and information for STEM careers, hands-on science activities, robotic competitions, community and school exhibits, and food trucks. So we hope to see you on Saturday. We also have a lot of other things coming up. We are partnering with the city, and there will be the City of Newport News and the public school system. We invite you to join us for the City of Champions event on Wednesday. Next week is a busy week, May twenty-fourth at Todd Stadium from five to eight. It is for all students, families, and staff. You are invited to attend, to be recognized, and to celebrate your accomplishments. The City of Champions will feature student performances, so please come out and support your students, families come out and support your children, inflatables, free food, so I'll say that again, families bring your kids out, free food, school exhibits, concessions, giveaways, door prizes, and more. Please visit our website to register to attend. We have something new that's happening. Our Child Nutrition Department is sponsoring a very new event, again around food. Students and families are invited to attend the very first annual food festival on Thursday, May the twenty-fifth, from five to seven. It will be held at Gildersleeve Middle School. Families will be able to sample new food items as possible offerings for next school year, and some current items that are on our school menu. So surveys will be available for families to complete to share their opinion, so please mark your calendars for the food festival. And I will just add to my comments, and Ms. Brooks knows this, our students from Sage wanted to talk about food and what we serve in the cafeteria. So students, this is an opportunity for you and your families to come out, taste the foods, and have some input into what will be served in our cafeteria next year. So that concludes my comments for this evening, Madam Chair.
All right, thank you, Dr. Mitchell. Lots of exciting things going on. We'll move on to item six, another opportunity to hear from the public. Are there any cards?
No, ma'am.
Okay, we'll move on to the agenda, matters by the school board. We will begin with Ms. Alger.
Yes, just a couple of things. This time of year is extremely busy, as you know. The kids, as well as the teachers, are in the throes of SOLs, and I just simply want to say, you know, thank you to everyone, including parents, for making sure this whole entire year has been a big push for our students, and making sure that this season is successful for our kids. It's not always easy. I know building administrators, they have to prepare for this time of year, and as we saw today with some of the presentations from some of our leaders, they've done a phenomenal job. So thank you to everyone, and best of luck during the testing session.
Thank you. Ms. Ayman?
Sure. Thank you to everyone who spoke tonight, and I'll just echo what Ms. Alger said, we're in the homestretch, we're not quite at summer yet, so we can push through, you know, keep focused, and parents, keep supporting your kids, and summer will be here before we know it. So good things are happening.
Mr. Hunter?
Well, thank you, Madam Chair. Just want to say, great things are happening in Newport's public schools. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Brown?
All right. Well, happy graduation to everyone, and I'll say the same thing that I say at this time of year, every year, which is, please celebrate responsibly, make sure that you have a great time at graduation, but not so great that you do something foolish and turn a great season into a tragedy. So I'm just, I'm always the bummer to say that, make sure that you celebrate responsibly, and let's have a great set of graduations. Really looking forward to seeing all the students coming across the stage. It's a great time of the year, so when we come together and do that. Our theme of our work session tonight, as we heard, was finish strong, so I'll hold up my finish strong sticker, and that's my message to everyone throughout the Division is let's just finish strong. Everything that you've been doing, please continue to do it, get good sleep, and pay attention to your diet so that you can finish strong and have your best performance on your test day. So let's finish strong and have a good end to the year, and then it'll be time for us to start working on our plans for next year. I know we got several policies coming up in the June meeting, it's going to be very policy-rich to the folks who have asked about status of the safety proposals I put forward. Those will be presented in June, as I understand it, so I'm very happy and thankful that we could come together and coalesce around a set of policies that I think are going to be beneficial to the school Division moving forward. So looking forward to planning for next year, and with middle school sports happening, it's going to be a fantastic twenty-three, twenty-four. Looking forward to twenty-three, twenty-four is definitely going to be better than this year, but this year's going to be great because we're going to finish.
Great. Mr. Harris?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I would like to say that I feel a different energy I felt in the last couple of months. It is, how can I put it? You know, things happen, but you have a choice, we have a choice on how we respond to those things that happen, and I can clearly, just from my position, that I've seen some positive changes, not only seen, but you can feel it, and I think that's a testament to the administration, interim superintendent, and her staff. So I just want to say thank you all for what you've done and what you've been through the last couple of months. It's tough, it's hard, but like I've always said, you know, when you have tragedy, you also have an opportunity for triumph. Just depends on how we deal with it and how we move forward. All right, thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you. Dr. Beth?
Good evening. Ditto to what everyone else has said, and I also have...
Ditto to what everyone else has said, and I also have a few shout-outs for Heritage High School. They received their first blue ribbon from the Virginia Music Educational Association, and you receive a blue ribbon when the entire music department receives a superior concert rating, so congratulations to them. Also, I had the opportunity to attend Mamma Mia! at Woodtide High School, and it was an excellent production. The students were just amazing, and I would like to thank them and the staff and all the parents. It was just exciting times, and I really thoroughly enjoyed that. Attended the Young Authors at Easton Academy, we have students that attend there, and it was also amazing as well to, to hear what the students had to share and to see the pride as they shared with you their books, so congratulations to them as well. And as Mr. Brown has said, finish strong and hold the line.
Very good. Thank you so much. I echo everything that's been said. Just to add to that, I'd like to thank our city mayor and city council and their support teams for fully funding our operational budget this year. They also are supporting with our yearly efforts towards our bus replacement schedule, so that was above and beyond the operational budget, and of course, they lent immediate support during our time of need for some security matters in the division, so we're greatly in appreciation of that. And we will finish strong. Thank you. Good night. Meeting adjourned.